Welcome back. Yimin Tuan Tseis, Senator in Guam is back from recess. We are still on second reading and we are on Bill number 185-36COR. And I recognize the sponsor Senator Sabina Flores Perez.
Thank you Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 185-36COR as introduced by myself Senator Sabina Flores Perez as an act to transfer lot number 10122-14NEW-R1, municipality of Dedido formerly known as the Dedido Solid Waste Transfer Station to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency for their headquarters. I'd like to place it on this third reading file and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill number 185-36, which aims to transfer lot 10122-14NEW-R1, which is owned by the government of Guam and the municipality of Dedido to Guam EPA for their headquarters. In addition, Bill 185 aims to provide an opportunity for Guam EPA to lead by example by redeveloping a site using the Brownfield Land and Revitalization Program that promotes the reuse of properties which may be complicated by the presence of potential, the presence or the potential presence of a hazardous substance, pollutant, or contaminant. This property which contained the former Dedido Transfer Station is in an occupied, undeveloped, and adversely impacted, and in adversely impacted state as a result of industrial activity and use. Since 1985, Guam, I'm sorry, since 1995 Guam EPA has been operating in teesin, in buildings which are not presently owned by Guam EPA. In March 2021, Guam EPA was a recipient of $3 million from the total award from the Department of Interior Capital Improvement Projects in which Guam EPA can use that funding for architectural and engineering design and site improvements for a proposed Guam EPA building. Under the current terms of Guam EPA's consolidated grant, Guam EPA has received about $3.9 million for fiscal year 2019 and is expected to receive approximately $3.2 million every year throughout the life of the five-year cycle and has the ability to earmark any portion of these funds to cover building costs, building project cost. The Guam EPA Administrator testified that roughly about $8,000 a month is currently used for rent from the consolidated grant and was advised that this same amount can be used for payment towards their new headquarters. Guam EPA may expend its consolidated grant funding towards a new building provided these funds are not used on a lease for real property that is owned by the government of Guam. In cooperation with US EPA, Guam EPA officials are able to leverage federal financial and technical resources at no cost to the government of Guam to perform cleanup and remedial action on this property for community use and benefit. These resources are made possible through the work of US EPA's Superfund Technical Assessment and Response Team. With allowable costs under Guam EPA's consolidated grant, real property designated and transferred to Guam EPA with full remediation that serve in the best interests of the island and ensure fiduciary responsibility of agency funding which is designated for facilities, Guam EPA can finally address its longstanding issue with a lack of a permanent home as the agency continues to modernize and build capacity to ensure that Guam's environmental laws are upheld and enforced. I would like to thank Guam EPA, Department of Land Management for working together to find this property and to work out the details of what needs to be done to get this property into Guam PA inventory. I would like to thank the Speaker and her staff for their due diligence and research and clarifications with the pertinent agencies. And I ask my colleagues for their support on this measure to give Guam EPA a permanent home and I look forward to any questions. Zidus Massey.
Zidus Massey. Senator, on Bill number 185-36COR, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 185 and the initiative by Senator Sabina Perez as the Oversight Chair for Guam EPA to introduce this legislation. It has been a long time in coming. I mean, next year will be the 50th anniversary since Guam EPA was officially created to do the work that it does and should be doing hopefully more aggressively with regards to regulating environmental laws that we have here in our community. The location, I'm sure many of us are very familiar. We don't see all the junk cars that used to be there, but back in the 1980s, 1990s, this was a location where many junk cars were left to pile up acres and acres of junk cars that were crushed and were five or six stories high. Unfortunately, you know, the government of Guam and having this as a location did not properly address the sanitization of these vehicles before they left them out there for many, many years. And so we had issues with regards to batteries and gas and other types of oils and fuels that were leaking into the ground. And unfortunately, had to issue several, if not during my time, notices of violation for the improper storage of these junk cars on this property. Hard to believe in this day and age that that would happen, especially in the northern part of Guam where our northern drinking water aquifer is located. So I have to say, I'm very pleased with this. I think the fact that this is part of the Brownfield Program, not named after me, but of course, in properly addressing the rehabilitation of this land that otherwise has been contaminated and does not, does need to be remediated. I think there's so much more that we will gain as a community and as an example to everyone of what we can do where areas have been contaminated and remediation work has been done and it can be brought back to a safe standard. I think it'd be quite a statement for Guam EPA to finally, after all these years, have a home. At the time I worked with the agency, we were down at the Harmon Plaza and the agency has had no permanent location. I think we all agree that for things and the work and services of the government, environmental protection is a very key component and will no doubt be a permanent component of the government of Guam. And so certainly have a facility that they can call their own, take property that otherwise is not being used and would be very, very costly for the government itself or even if a private developer were to take over to address remediation. This is the best option to have available, to have the federal government assist in the cleanup of this property and restoring it to a very valuable use of giving a home to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. So I certainly support this. It's appreciated and certainly I would like to be, if the sponsor has no objection, second cosponsor to this bill. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment with regards to Bill 185.
Thank you Senator Brown. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on Bill 185? Senator Tai Tegui, you're recognized and then Senator Duñez.
Zidus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to stand in full support of this legislation. I mean, when it's being paid for by the federal government, that's an added plus to this whole bill. It makes a big difference, especially now. I do want to ask though, since the time of the, to the author of the bill, if she should yield on a question I have.
Please state your question.
Thank you Madam Speaker. My question is, during the public hearing, it was asked how soon that this project will begin. As you noticed in the committee report, we've seen a lot of pictures, you know, already of them digging up the area and trying to find certain toxins because, of course, this is going to be the new home for EPA and to ensure that the building is sitting on safe land and things that have been completely cleaned up. So what is the status on the, one, the cleanup of the area and the ability to place a new building for EPA there, the timeline?
Will the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do. So in speaking with Guam PA, they wanted to get this project as soon, they wanted to get started on this project as soon as possible. So currently, the part where Dedido Transfer Station, it's undergone already a Phase II assessment. So they have an idea of what kind of contaminants are there. There are, so right now, I think they're gonna, they're gonna seek grants for cleanup of that site. There's another part to this property which still needs to be assessed. But in speaking with Guam PA, they wanted to get this project done as soon as possible because there's a timeline to the Capital Improvement Project Grant. So they, I believe, the timeline is roughly, I think, September or October of this year. So they're gonna work hard to accomplish this timeline so that they can get started at least on the architectural design portion of it.
Thank you Senator. Senator Tai Tegui.
Thank you so much and I think that's very good information to know, you know, as we're moving forward, something to look forward to. And again, I stand in full support of this legislation and look forward to great things that are coming our way with Guam PA and the assistance they're receiving, especially funded by funds on this new building. So, and I ask as well to be a cosponsor of this legislation. Thank you Madam Chair, or Speaker.
Thank you Senator. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Zidus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I certainly also rise in full support of Bill 185-36 and commend the author for the introduction. You know, Madam Speaker, a lot of times, what we endeavor for here on the floor is to find a win-win. And this is certainly a hallmark of a win-win. You know, we have the agency charged in our government with really overseeing, you know, our environment and the protection of our environment obviously embodied in its name. And knowing that we have many sites on Guam that for what various reasons, you know, have been contaminated and have been polluted and have a situation whereby, you know, a great deal of expenditure has to go forward in order to be able to clean that up. And to take a situation where you have a government agency, like many government agencies throughout the years, may have gone from rental property to rental property to teesin properties which were, you know, returned to the government of Guam and many agencies found their home there, temporary or permanent. And now to see a situation whereby, you know, a government agency gets significant federal resources and not only to build a headquarters for one of the most vital instrumentalities of our government, but also to be able to clean up this area. Madam Speaker, I was heartened to see in the file on Bill 185-36, a resolution by the Dedido Municipal Planning Council, you know, in full support of this effort as well. I worked with the Dedido Mayor over the years before as the Department of Youth Affairs Director, trying to get a permanent home for our youth center. And it's always good to get the buy-in from the mayor as well as the Municipal Planning Council when you're doing projects like this. And I wanted to kind of comment a little bit on that too, Madam Speaker, because we know over the years, there's been a lot of discussion that's gone back and forth in terms of the convenience that once existed for the ability to use that transfer station for the drop off of household waste and other things. And so, you know, there was some discussion on whether or not that was something we wanted to revitalize. And I was happy to see that the Solid Waste Management Authority basically said, you know, that really first, you know, has a collateral situation where sometimes it causes even more difficulty and even though it could be a convenience in terms of household waste management and other, and other things like that. And they showed how really, right now, the Harmon, you know, location is really doing a good job in terms of folks who need to, you know, go ahead and dispose of their household waste as well as hazardous waste there. I've gone there a number of different times, Madam Speaker, to drop off waste oil, batteries, old computers and things like that. And it really is an efficient operation up there in Harmon. And so I just bring that to light, you know, to say that, I think this is an indication of when, you know, there, there may be other differences within the community, but when the greater good is looked for here and, and found an opportunity to serve that greater good, even though we had for many years to use the convenience of this location along with other things that were done on this location, which led to the current situation where we do have an environmental issue up there. So as I said, you know, we, we look for win-wins whenever we can find them on the floor, Madam Speaker. And certainly, once again, this is an opportunity to show, you know, really ensuring that our government agencies as much as possible can leverage federal resources, you know, get a home to where they're not paying rent, clean up with federal dollars as well, you know, something that's environmentally difficult for us and, and have a home to call their own to do their operations of protecting our environment and our people. So it's a great bill and I look forward to voting in favor of it. Zidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Zidus Massey. Senator Duñez. Bill number 185-36, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of 185-36. It just goes to show what can happen when working collectively and collaboratively with each other on how we can move our government agencies forward. Here we are taking a piece of property that used to be a transfer station, something that was not cleaned up for many years. And now we have the agency that's, that has the, the gatekeepers of our environment that is going to take this property down, repurpose it, and put their headquarters there. And I think that's, my hats off to, to the author of the legislation for moving forward with this and ensuring that the Environmental Protection Agency will now have a permanent home in the future. Thank you Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senator Ada. Is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill. I'm just happy that the author of the bill added the updated resolution that the Municipal Planning Council of Dedido does support the bill because if you look at the committee report, it first started out without their support, they're now in support of it. I'm just hoping that as the EPA establishes their headquarters there, they look to their neighbor and they check if there's any more contaminants in that area because there's a dump right next door. I'm really hoping they can because then their arm is, their arm is not that short no more. It's their neighbor. When they clean up that area, look next door and check because that's Tamaulipas Land Trust property, that's supposed to be on lease, and that's been a dump for many, many years. And I am a resident of Dedido. I live in Jigo, but you can't take Dedido out of me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator from Dedido, Jigo. Senator Perez, I mean, sorry, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you Madam Speaker and I really appreciate the support of my colleagues in speaking in support of this bill. I just want to, you know, also reiterate that, you know, some of the contaminants could potentially leach into our drinking water. This is a prime area over our northern Guam lands aquifer. And I think it's so important that with Guam EPA taking on the leadership role in cleaning up the site and also protecting our aquifer as well as, you know, making it a home for their, for their facilities. So I'm glad that the retiring speaker talked about, you know, the, the area was a dump, well, actually was, was operated as a site to collect, you know, abandoned vehicles or vehicles. And so that was under the auspices of some of the recycling companies and which was also leased by Tamaulipas Land Trust. And so I do want to encourage Guam PA to work collaboratively with the Tamaulipas Land Trust in ensuring that all these contaminants are cleaned up and to ensure the safety of our, our environment and our people. So I want to also, before I, before I end, I want to add cosponsors to this bill. Senator Joanne Brown, Senators Telo Tai Tegui, Speaker Turlaqui, Senators Chris Duñez, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Joe Sinagastin. And if there's anybody that would like to be a cosponsor, Senator Peto Turlaqui. And I think that's...
On the motion to add the cosponsors, is there any objection? Clerk, did you get those names? Okay. Is there any objection to the motion to add cosponsors? Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Speaker. Thank you Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place Bill number 185-36COR as amended by the committee on the third reading, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're also, we're going to take a one-minute recess, one-minute recess. Thank you.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 41, to set it aside and place it at the bottom of the second reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 41 on the bottom of the second reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized. And Bill Number 83-36.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker, I move to set Bill Number 83-36COR aside and place it at the bottom of the second reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 83 in the bottom of the second reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 173-36LS. This bill, apparently a substitute version, has been sent to the clerks, and we would like to allow legal time to review the substitute version versus the other versions that were submitted. There's also a markup version that's been submitted for your convenience. So we're going to take a 30-minute recess. We will reconvene at 3:30. Thank you. So recess until 3:30.